Okay, it's five fifteen. We'll call the library meeting to order. Kevin, can you do a roll call, please?
Okay, we have President Knapp, Vice President Goldhammer, Member Luther, and Member Chart is present. Anne Temple is excused and Debbie Yerson is not here yet. So I'm not sure her status, if she'll be coming or not. But we have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin. Looking at the agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have an addition under financial report and approval of bills. I have a bill to present for approval.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Looking at the minutes from the July meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I didn't get any recommend suggestions for corrections from any board members.
Very last item for this meeting, I think it said September twenty twenty four.
Oh, yes, you did say that, and I did, I did correct, I corrected that, so.
But it's in the minute says printed, so.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, seeing no corrections or additions, I'll accept a motion to approve the and we have second.
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried. We're onto the director's report, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. I, I do have one other item that I want to add into my written director's report. And it would just be a, a, a fifth item that I will report on. At a previous meeting this year, I think at the May meeting, we talked about the postage budget. And, or at the July meeting, and in with having to pay for extra shipping in May and April for interlibrary loan. You all agreed at that point, you know, to pay for any additional postage. And through August, our postage budget was already spent. And so I actually for the, well, for the credit card, because I go to the post office and pay by credit card. And the credit card bill that just came, it, there was a hundred seventy three dollars and ninety four cents of postage that we paid for. So we've started that, so I wanted to inform you of that. And actually, that's a check that Denny signed. The other thing I just, I want to highlight from mine, you know, the great attendance, participation from our summer reading program. The increase over last year, you know, we had more participants and a lot more minutes read. Last year, we had five hundred twelve thousand nine hundred minutes reported read. And this year, that increased to six hundred ninety two thousand five hundred fifty minutes. So Mitchell continues to read.
So great.
So that's my written report, and then I'll move on to strategic plan updates. And so the, you know, you know, I reported of what we have accomplished. More as of September, so anything in red is new for September. And I just want to go to goal B. Let's see, where is it? Oh, no, actually, it was not goal B. It was under marketing, wasn't it? Marketing. The very first one, sorry, goal A, number one. That I said this strategy is nearly achieved, and I can, I can say that as of today, that strategy is achieved. The sign was installed yesterday. The power was hooked up to it this morning. And this afternoon, after a call to Daktronics to figure out why it wasn't receiving our graphics. They found a setting that was needed to be changed and
Do you feel it gets a little bit dim?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna look at that tomorrow. I, I have to see.
Hard to see, and I expected it to be
Because
the prototype, which was just like
Yeah, so I, I need to look at that tomorrow. And, you know, you look at First Lutherans, and theirs is much brighter. I mean, a different brand, they, they went with the different, the fire, whatever brand it was, but was brighter. So, yeah, I think I saw a setting in the controls that I have for that.
It'll probably use more electricity, but it'll be worth it.
Yeah, so any questions about any of my written report or strategic plan updates?
To approve the director's request?
Wait, I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
But thank you for your enthusiasm. And, and then after, after the strategic plan update, we have Max's and Jean, Max Blaskas and Jean Patrick's update, and they give a little bit more information about summer reading program and, you know, some of the participants' breakdowns. And same with Jean.
I just wanted to add to the goals, goal D, number two, develop better connections with various schools. You mentioned coming to the library on Dakota Westland's campus. I did get feedback from the gentleman that I brought down to the library to get his library card, that he was able to get a book through Libby immediately, where in Minneapolis, it was a three-month wait. So he was thrilled, because I just wanted you to know, I've already used it and I love it.
Good.
Good, good.
And, yeah, I, I have that, a note there, the update, that we will be will actually be going, I think in November is the date to go there and do a library card signup for college students at Dakota Westland and promote Libby there, too.
I also wanted to add, I saw in Jean's update that she's doing a read to the children on the after school pro, after school program at LBW. And now that they're doing the after school program, what a captive audience. And I'm assuming she's gonna do GBR and Longfellow as well, but that's a great way to reach kids that may not normally go to the library.
Yeah, I know she has good relations with Longfellow and LBW. Getting into Gertie Bell has been a bit more of a challenge, but she continues to work on that.
At all, or what they're after in school program, or?
Just, yeah, getting in, yeah, getting in there, yeah. So, but she continues to work on that relationship, so. And then I'll just quickly point out, you know, the screen is, is tough with all of the num, numbers. So I'll go to the graph, but things that I want to point out are in July, and so this is since our last meeting, in July, we had over seventeen thousand items checked out. And so that is the highest number of checkouts in a month since I started five years ago.
Was there some reason, was something happening?
Well, summer reading program.
Oh, yeah, of course.
But, I mean, but it's just can additional, I mean, we had more participants in summer reading programs, so, you know. And then in the in the graphs statistics, I think you can see for twenty twenty five, the right-hand bar. We are just basically at the total circulation we had in two thousand, in twenty twenty three. I mean, we're just a, you know, a couple hundred, you know, two hundred sixty five fewer through August than we had the entire month of twenty twenty three. And our monthly average circulation for this year, you know, is maintaining two thousand more a month than last year. So.
This is amazing. Have we thought about posting that on Facebook?
Um, ye, yes, we will. I mean
I think that July number is crazy. That's great. And people love like, oh, my gosh, what's going on at the library? And, you know, maybe I should check it out. I haven't been there in five years, so.
And Kevin, when you presented at the city council meeting, that was so well received. So I would, I mean, if you did that quarterly, when you have something like this, and you can say what you just told us, I, I feel like that is another place that needs, it needs to be heard by the people.
Okay. The next graph, well, next two, and so you can see our monthly. It's the, the July is there, and every month, every month this year, you know, we've been up over, over last year. And then the next one, the library traffic, I also, I mean, I already, I think, maybe just sent out an email to, to share this. But we had our first since the traffic counter, the people counter was installed when the fall that I started. We had our first month that we had over six thousand people in the library. That was in July as well, so. So.
And then remind me what happened in two thousand seventeen with library cards?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I mean, because quite, I mean, quite honestly, you know, some of the statistics, I mean, I've said this before. Some of the statistics, you know, prior to, you know, when I came. I'm not sure how everything was, was counted. So, yeah, that just seems like an anomaly, anomaly, anomaly.
I wonder if there was an automatic renewal without, you know, like everybody, every card that was in the system was automatic.
Well, we don't, I mean, this, that's just like new cards that we issue, so, yeah. I mean, I know, you know, back then, there, there was a push to get data files from the school district, from the high school. You know, to create library accounts for the, for high school students and middle school students. And that's probably in there, but those numbers were also in the next couple of years as well. And probably till, you know, you see the, the decrease in twenty twenty one is about the time that we stopped getting those files. And, I mean, there are issues about that. You know, we should be, for any minor, we should be getting a parent signature. Accepting responsibility for that. So, I mean, it's not, it's not something that we really, you know.
Is it possible it's just a data entry error in twenty seventeen?
Maybe. I haven't, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the graphs, you know, I just go back five years, kind of when I started, I could do that with that, too, and just. I haven't gone back to look to see why the numbers, and if there were some months that were, were higher. I guess it hasn't gotten on my radar to do that. If you would like me to, I could.
No, that's
Okay.
I just was curious.
And then our program numbers, you know, just graph-wise. You know, already through twenty twenty five for total numbers, you know, we're about five hundred less, and we still have four months to go. And then for the children, it's a little bit more than five hundred. Actually, I'm gonna go back up to the, to the table. Because I do want to point that out. Program attendance, you know, one of the goals in the strategic plan is to, you know, offer more programming for adults and for YA. And this year already, you know, for our YA participation, we're seventy nine percent ahead of all of last year. And we're twenty percent ahead of all of last year for adult participation. So last year, we had a hundred ninety nine teens participate. This year, we have three hundred fifty six already. And adults, we had four hundred seventeen and four hundred ninety nine this year. So we're also achieving there. So that's the director's report.
Let me move approval of the director's report. That was fabulous.
Second director's report.
Second by Megan.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. On to the financial report.
Okay, first, as I said, I have a bill that I will present for approval to pay. We had an interlibrary loan book that we borrowed from Mayville State University and packaged it up, sent it in the US Postal Service, and the envelope arrived at Mayville State University Library, and it was empty. So it was empty. So interlibrary loan agreements state that the borrowing library is responsible for replacing the book, you know, until it responsible for the book until it arrives back. So the bill is for twenty three dollars.
Kevin, can I just clarify? My memory is short currently. Our, our checking account balance is eighty six thousand and change. What was our bottom limit, seventy five?
Well, a number of years, yeah, a few years ago, when we talked about that, we had, had the board had at that point said you kind of wanted to have a, maintain a reserve of around seventy five thousand. I mean, quite honestly, I think it could be lower than that, but, you know, I mean, what do we?
Well, we were up around a hundred and twenty at the time.
Yeah, and we were up to over a hundred thousand when you decided to, you know, pay for half the sign, so. You know, we, we had to pay for the
It's no indictment. I'm just, I was asking just
For the digital sign, you know, we had to pay fifty percent of the cost, and I just took that out of the board, so that's why we dropped down to this much. There'll still be a, a portion of it, because we have the electrical that, that we haven't been billed yet. So. Okay, but so if we could have a motion to approve paying this bill?
So moved.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried.
Kevin, do we do, do we file something with the post office, or we're just out of luck?
I talked to them, and they, the supervisor said he would, like, contact the, the sorting facility and see if it was found. I mean, that would, he said that's the only place really that they would be able to find it, is if it came out of the package at the sorting facility. You know, if it came out in some truck or along the way or whatever.
And we don't do any insurance or anything like that?
No, I asked. The, the library rate does not include insurance. But, you know, it's the cheapest rate there is.
And
And, and surprisingly, the last time first class stamps went up, or stamp prices went up back in July.
Yeah.
Library rate went down.
Oh, wow.
A few pennies, but still.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Um, have we had an issue with?
No, it was it was actually the guy who packaged it.
Okay.
You're looking at him. The, what I normally do is I put packing tape, you know, fold the flap and put packing tape on it. Rather than pulling the little strip, but on that particular one, I remembered, you know. I'm, that strip's there, and I still do that instead of spend money on tape. Well, I learned my lesson. You buy envelopes and those sticky strips don't always stick. So.
Also, you know the guy.
Yeah, I, yeah, I kicked his butt. So now we can move on. If it's okay, I'll move on to the financial reports. Bank statement for July, there is the ending balance eighty six, six forty four. And I'll just quickly then go to the August one. And then eighty seven, nearly seven hundred. So well, we'll have plenty there to cover any last costs on the portion of the sign that we're responsible for.
Include, that has our portion of the sign in it.
Well, we already paid a large portion of the, the board's portion.
Yeah, so what's the balance that we?
You know, the sign did not come, you know, less than, less than seventy thousand. So I, we paid, so actually, the sign from Pride Neon, half of it, the down payment, was twenty eight thousand two hundred fif, two hundred twenty five. So fifty six, four fifty. And then, and, and so, well, then the other half will still have to pay. And so, you know, that would come out of the city, my, my library budget for that. And then we will have the bill from Muth Electric for running electricity. And then I'm sure today, it ended up taking about four hours, because there were some issues for them to hook up power to the sign and get it going. So you know, so we'll, we'll have that, too. So. But, but, I mean, there, that was less than ten thousand dollars. So it was about probably sixty two total, or somewhere in there, if I remember the, the quote for electricity being run. So. Well, the balance, to pride, the other half to Pride Neon would come out of the library budget. And then half the electrical would come from the library trustee's account and, yeah, yeah. And then here are the present loss statements for July, August, and then year to date through August for the, for the board account. So for July, it was, we had about a hundred dollars less in revenue than a year ago. And we spent a bit more paying for expenses, just timing-wise. In, in August, we had about two hundred, a little more than two hundred in revenue more than a year ago. And less in that we paid for expenses, timing-wise. And so and then year to date, we are about thirteen, a total income of about a thousand dollars more than a year ago. And for expenses, about five hundred twelve dollars less than a year ago thus far. So we're about fifteen, nearly fifteen fifty net over last year. And then library budget, where we are. I mean, salaries are where, where we are. That's just, you know, set every two weeks for most of our budgets. I'll point out, if you can see the repair and maintenance budget. There's a good chunk left in there, because originally, when we had, we thought it was going to be six thousand dollars to install the track lighting around the perimeter. The six thousand dollars was put into my repair and maintenance account, and then when we needed, it actually was significantly more than that. And Stephanie, I want to prove it from contingency, I believe. That funding then was put into down under capital outlay for building improvements. And, and then you can see that we've overspent that amount by about sixty one hundred. And then she said, we aren't gonna transfer that six thousand dollars. Just don't spend that six thousand dollars out of repair and maintenance and, and then do it that way, because it's really, because of that cost, it should come out of capital outlay. And other, other accounts were pretty much on track, except it doesn't show up here, because we just got the bill. Water and sewer, we were budgeted twenty one hundred dollars for the entire year, and the bill that I just got about a week or so ago for the summer was two thousand dollars. So a three-month bill is taking up my entire budget. So I'm gonna have to make sure that we hold back some in some other account and talk to, I'll talk to Stephanie and why not about that.
I mean, obviously, I'm thinking about where that water, I mean, is mostly water.
In the summer, we water the, the boulevard grass. So, but, I mean, Quincy did shut off the water. You know, when we were getting water. Rain, I mean, when we were getting rain in July and early August, but then in August, he shut it off, so we haven't watered. But, you know, rates have gone up, you know, the city comes. But, you know, rates have gone up, you know, the city council, they raised those rates quite a bit. And we're seeing it, but, yeah, so. But other than that, I mean, our I our budget, I'm I'm not concerned about where we are with anything. Um, books, we're kind of, you know, we're two thirds through the year, and we've spent about nearly two thirds of it, so. Um, so that's the finance reports.
Anyone have any further questions for Kevin?
I do. I um forgot to pay attention to what your budget request was for for twenty twenty six, and what was.
Yes, I should have actually, I I should have included that. Thank you, Susan, for asking. Um, shouldn't have included that in my report. Um, you know, we talked about the our budget request at the July meeting, and um I don't, I don't have that with me, but when I met with the the mayor and city administrator, um, everything, they had approved everything that I asked for, except for a five thousand dollar increase to part time wages, which, um, I can live with that. I mean, I had hoped we could schedule a few more hours, but, you know, they'll still, it's still, we're getting an increase over over, you know, we have this year. So, um, and I had, you know, requested, you know, some increases. I mean, utilities are gonna go up, water and sewer are going up. So, pretty much everything, I mean, I I think, um, it was you know, conservative, didn't really ask for anything wild. Um, but, you know, we got everything. I did request like whatever amount um for carpet cleaning next year, and that was approved. So, we'll get to carpet.
And I think that's a reflection of the positive reports and the good things that are happening there, that that was something that wasn't viewed as something that needed to be cut. So, um, you, I have no doubt that it would have been brought up anyway, but the fact that it went in at the amount that you requested, that's a good sign. So.
Yeah, I was, I was very thankful. Cause, I mean, our first couple of years, well, and I had, my first couple of years, I hadn't, you know, established a record with the city administrators and the mayor, and, you know, there were some cuts. But, you know, those were also COVID years and not knowing what things were. So, I, and and for this year, I mean, just with the talk of, you know, state legislature, you know, cutting some things in the budget or whatever, and, you know, you hear some cities are not seeing sales tax growth like they did last year. Um, you know, I wanted to be conservative and not ask for a lot, but there were increases and and they, I'm expecting them to be funded.
Okay, if there's no further questions for Kevin on the financial report, I'll request a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Megan, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried. Onto item number seven, business items and approval of funding requests.
Okay, um, we have two funding requests, uh, both relate to South Dakota Library Association. And Denny, did you decide not to attend the conference? I mean.
Uh, I haven't completely made up my mind, but uh I will probably, probably not go there.
Okay, I mean, it's coming up in two weeks. Um, and so I'm requesting, um, that funding for covering the travel costs for Jean Patrick and me to go, cause I don't have enough in our travel budget for both of us to attend and and register and pay for hotel and.
So, seven hundred dollars is pretty minimal, but you have other money budgeted.
Yes.
Besides.
Yeah.
I know approval that we, of the seven hundred dollars.
Okay, um, well, if we just take them all to, both of them together, if that's fine, I mean, then it's just one. Um, and then the other one is, in the last years, um, you all have funded a membership to South Dakota Library Association for you all. And so, um, the cost this year is twenty three dollars, and so it would be a total of a hundred thirty eight dollars for um to pay for memberships for all of you to be members of SDLA. You'll get the um quarterly newsletter and other mailings. So, hopefully, it's been valuable to those of you who've been on the board. So, Megan, you would get a new membership.
Great. Um, and then do they do with the conference, do they provide any per diem or anything for speaker like?
No.
Okay.
No, in in fact, I mean, we have to library rent is cheap, and they don't. I mean, that question was asked to me, I think, by by um Stephanie Owen too. And, you know, we have to pay, even if we present, we have to pay for the registration and, yeah. Yeah.
No one pays for speakers.
Yeah. So.
As far as the library conference for next year, do we know where that's gonna be held yet, Kevin?
Um, I don't. It'll be back in South Dakota.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, if you give me a minute, um.
Should be East River, hopefully.
So, future conference, twenty twenty six is in Pierre. Twenty twenty seven is in Watertown.
Sounds good. The board should make an attempt to go next year if they can, a couple more members on board if they could.
It covers, it counts for the training. So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried. Item number eight, committee reports. We have no committees currently active?
No, no committee reports that I know of.
Board input for the good of the board. We've had some discussion along the way of things that we like, we're proud of seeing what's going on, that have already been discussed, so. I have no others.
Okay, no.
Well, we have no citizens here. Any correspondence from any citizens that are upset? That's good. Okay, we're all very happy.
You're sweet, Susan. I love it.
Okay, then, uh, item number eleven, adjournment. We need to set the next meeting.
Um, next meeting would be scheduled for November eighteenth, the third Tuesday of November at five fifteen here in council chambers. Well, um, yeah, we we can have training in October if you would like, um. Yeah.
We should have something, maybe from the convention, it can be brought back.
Yeah, if there's anything, yeah, that I could share about that. And then, um, you know, just based on a conversation I had with at least one of you, um, in the last couple of months, I was thinking, you know, maybe it would be worthwhile to go over and, you know, let you all know about some of the, you know, database tools that we use for um cataloging and um and just how we do some of our our jobs.
I would love, like, just a up close and personal look at the health of the library, like, what goes on behind it.
Well, um, yeah, we could also do, the last time we did that training, when, you know, we, you each so some of you ca- sked came in and, you know, we sh- we kinda walked you through checking out and doing that. I mean, I don't know if everybody did that. I mean, we could, yeah, I, I mean, well, but we could, we could also ha- we could offer that, Susan, to you, um, as a, and Megan, to you too. Um, you know, cause we did kind of showed you, you know, some of our policies and, you know, checking out materials and how we go about weeding and, you know, just kind of walking through some of our day to day things. So, um, okay, I will.
Something else that I'd just like to put on your list of trainings is um some stuff that I've been reading lately, like trends and futures and like what what's coming. Is there any way here, do you know anybody near, or do you guys do research on library trends, like in five years, what's projected? And maybe you guys did that as part of strategic planning process. But I'm just wondering if there would be a month where we could do something where you could like share trends in libraries, like what's happening, what's coming. What are librarians seeing as signals and trends?
Yeah, I mean, ever since I've been in the profession, you know, there have been those projections and, yeah. You know, cause when I got my master's degree in ninety three, you know, eBooks were just gonna be right around the corner, and that took longer than. But, I mean, there are those, you know, types of things. And if you go to the, you know, some national conferences, you know, there are gonna be those types of sessions too. So, yeah, we can certainly add that.
Do we want to set a specific date for October training or do we want to do it individually if we?
Well, you know, if we do, I guess, you know, the third Tu- does the third Tuesday work for everybody in in, come on?
That'd be the twenty first.
Of October.
Yes.
So that's past past Native American Day.
This is in October?
Yeah, and that would be at the library.
Yeah, I'm open.
Okay, so, so training, October twenty first at five fifteen in the library. And then additionally, um, I still will email Megan, you and Susan, you know, to set up a time if you want to, if it works out sometime, you know, just that you could come. Yeah, five fifteen on the twenty first.
How long?
An hour.
Okay.
And then that goes, you know, we we count that and track that for going towards uh board training that the board needs to receive collectively, um, you know, about fifteen hours a year um to go towards accreditation.
Where do we stand right now as far as paying hours?
Well, we just, um, you know, got reaccredited. So we had, so we're basically starting new at zero. Things that, I mean, I submitted it in June, so, and we really didn't, we didn't have any training over the summer, so.
So we haven't till next June, then, yet our fifteen hours?
Well, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, if if everyone shows up at these trainings, we do an hour, you know, that's six hours right there. So if we do three sessions like that, or, you know, if somebody, and we have to do, um, I mean, we have to do our, the hours, like over the three years. So, um, you know, in the three years, we have to get the that number of hours. It's nice to get the the fifteen each year, um, so.
Like, would art, Susan and I's trip count or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then, um, and then, you know, though, if next year one or two people go to SDLA conference, you know, typically, that's about twelve to fifteen hours right there. And so, you know, we kinda get enough hours in one year if somebody go into a conference like that. So.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Anything else before we adjourn? If not, we'll adjourn meeting at five fifty seven PM.
My other meeting got out early too. This is so great. We have two meetings, one in Oregon, one from Alaska, and I have been.